The meeting to order at seven oh eight, um, at least would you please, uh, take attendance?
Sure. Joe Abdullah?
Here.
John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Alex?
Oh, he's not here.
Okay. Justin? Jen? I'm here. Mike?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Peter? And Mary? Okay.
Well, it looks like we have ten, so we have a quorum. Uh, at this point, I'm going to ask if there are any public comments on matters on the agenda.
Dan, can you go away from presenter view so we can see if there's any hands that are up?
Hi, I'm not sure. Hi, this is Lorraine Dunlarinetto. I'm not sure if that's me now or later.
That is you, Lorraine, and thank you so much for sending out your presentation in advance.
Oh, you're welcome. Should I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lorraine Dunlarinetto, and I'm a resident of Bridgewater. I've been, uh, living in the town since nineteen ninety-five. I had to think about that. Uh, both my boys went to Region Twelve Chapag and to Burnham School. And we're very happy about that. What I want to do is ask about the use of facility for booth-free school gymnasium. I am the karate instructor for Roxbury Karate. Yes, I live in Bridgewater, but I teach karate in Roxbury. And we've been using the gymnasium for quite a while. My master instructor Doug Wilkie started the Roxbury Karate Program in the mid nineteen nineties. And we've been doing it consistently every year since then. So we've got quite a long history and track record. I'm a fifth-degree black belt, and I love teaching the program. It's got great physical benefits for the people who attend, and it also teaches respect, which is great uh, for our children that are forming and in their formative years. So I'm a really strong advocate for the program. So what I'd like to do is, is ask if the Board of Education could consider allowing us to use the gymnasium. We teach, or I teach the program on Tuesday evenings from six thirty to eight. Through the summer, we've been using the pavilion at Hurlbrook Park. It will be getting rather cold. We anticipate in the month of November. Uh, we've been happy to train there, but it will just not be an option for us once it gets down into the freezing digits. So in terms of the program content, it is Tang Sudo Karate, and it is practiced on an individual basis with no contact, no contact. We practice what's called forms or hyungs in Korean. We also practice what's called one steps, which are done as individuals, and then also kicking the air and punching in the air. And it's all about flexibility, balance, and control the body. Uh, the program, present time, my new session starts tomorrow, and I expect that I'll have about eight students enrolling in the program. So would anticipate a total of nine individuals plus myself. We would be masked, and we would be socially distanced. I have thought through a protocol to follow for use of the school. We would hand sanitize on our way into the building. I would also drop cones. I have my own personal, uh, cones that I can bring in and drop the cones to mark a ten-by-ten-foot training area for each student. We would not use any of the equipment in the gymnasium. And on our way out, I would sanitize the handrails and the doorknobs. Uh, so that is my request, and I'll just see if anyone has any, any questions.
Greg, I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have to unmute myself. So you're not doing any sparring?
No, we, we will not do any sparring. We, we haven't been doing sparring. We've been training in the park since, I'm gonna say June, and we have not doing, been doing any sparring. So all of the practice is done as, on an individual basis, and we work within our ten-foot-by-ten-foot space.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I, I may, you, this may be in your materials. I'm sorry, I didn't see it. How long would this last? All winter?
Yes, yes. Yeah, in, in the past, um, as I mentioned, we've been doing the program, and the only days, any Tuesdays, that we have not been in the gym outside of the COVID situation was when the school was closed. So when Region Twelve closes the school due to snow or another weather event or anything else, we would not practice. So whether it's an after-school cancellation or a full-day cancellation, we would not train. But any other Tuesday, we would train. We would also not train during the holiday season when the school's closed. So any scheduled breaks that fall on a Tuesday, uh, we would not be training. But otherwise, if we could, it'd be great to do it like we've done it in the past when the school is open to, uh, train on those Tuesdays.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, does someone else have a question? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, should I disconnect from the Zoom meeting?
Oh, no, you can stay on if you want. I'm, I don't know if we're gonna be able to take this off. Uh, only because I don't think we have it on our agenda, but I cannot deal with it. There we go. Yes, John, go ahead.
Was that a question for me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question? Okay, and I, I, the volume-wise, I was not able to hear the question. My apologies.
He, he's asking whether or not, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
He's asking whether or not there's anyone involved in the program from outside the three towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington.
I do have, uh, two students. Um, they live right out over the Woodbury-Roxbury line. But technically, they live in Woodbury. But they live very close to the border.
I'm sorry, how, how many people in the program? Is it eight?
I'm expecting eight students to enroll, so with myself, it would be a total of nine.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I, I appreciate it. Is there something I need to do to add the topic to another, another meeting's agenda?
Greg?
Yeah, Jim.
No, ma'am, there's nothing you can do to add it to the agenda, but I'll make a motion to add it to the agenda, at least for consideration under new business.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, do you want to make that motion now, Jim?
Yes.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? One opposed, abstaining? All right. It will be added to the agenda under new business.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on matters on the agenda? I see none. So we'll move on. Next item is teacher evaluation. Mr. Brito.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. I'm gonna share my screen just to take us back to, um, the original document that the district created regarding teacher eval. That always takes just a moment. Can everybody see?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, Teresa.
Perfect, okay. So I'm just going to remind us of, um, how teacher evaluation was, um, put together in Region Twelve. It really was an effort through teachers, administrators, and with board approval, and the superintendent involved throughout all the steps. So we've had, um, our current evaluation protocols in place for, you know, six years or so um, before the state really settled on a model. And so there are different components, and there are percentages that are attached to each component in the teacher evaluation process. I would like to share that this year in particular, for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, the State Department of Education has provided some flexibility options. And Region Twelve, um, schools, we would like to participate and take advantage of these flexibility options. So one of those includes not having the actual percentages count and not having an actual summative rating for the end of the year. However, the majority of the protocols stay in place. So the first process here, the first step, I should say, in class observations, we, um, would have a system that teachers would rotate between formal and informal observations. And what that means is that a formal observation requires teachers to complete documents before the observation. And the observation was longer in as far as length of time that the administrator was in the class. This year, the state is really encouraging administrators to go in and observe frequently. Whether it's through Google meets or a Zoom for distance learning, or whether we are in person, it allows for administrators to go in for not as long as of a block of time, maybe ten, fifteen minutes, and go in frequently throughout the year. So we, um, all discussed it through our professional development and evaluation committee with administrators as well, with the superintendent, and felt that this would be a good option for us for this year. In addition, teachers do have to select a focus area, and that area really designates some of the work they'd be doing in the classroom to, um, impact student learning. And so there are some examples here, um, and my screen sort of like toggled ahead of me. So, you know, questioning techniques, for example, ways to improve instructional practice. So every teacher selects an actual focus area. And then in addition to that, the review of practice. Just give me a second if I'm getting control of my little scroll button here. Okay, the review of practice focuses on what teachers are doing outside of the classroom to improve their craft. So it certainly could be book studies, research that they're doing. What are they doing that will impact the learning, but they're doing that outside of the classroom? That is still continuing and intact. In addition, there are goals. The goals have been academic in nature. The state was very, um, strong in this aspect when the legislation first was, um, put out to a vote. However, for this year in particular, they are allowing flexibilities so that a social, emotional, and engagement option is available to educators. So the academic goal can certainly still be considered. But rather than exclusively having an academic focus, the evaluator and the teachers can work together to come up with goals that meet social, emotional learning or engagement goals. And so basically, the two flexibility options are the observations would be informal, and the goals can now have a different, um, lens, not just academic. So I'm going to stop sharing for a second and bring up another document that summarizes what the flexibility options are, but I wanted to just share with you the original document that had been created. And we do, our complete document is over thirty pages, and it's on our website, but these two pages summarize, um, the expectations that were in place. But we would like to request board approval for the flexibility options. And just, um, as a note here at the bottom where it has a hundred percent for the different, um, ratings, that will not occur if we do go with the flexibility options. So give me a second, and I'll share the next screen. Okay, so you can all see this particular document. The overview just refers to this executive order seven C. And it really clarifies that educator evaluation is, um, certainly still going to happen this school year, but provides some flexibilities that the state felt would be reasonable considering our current, um, reality in teaching and learning. So the goals here on the left, student learning indicators, now can certainly focus on social and emotional learning for students with a focus of engagement, um, as well. And the academic goal is still an option, but it's not the exclusive option. And the, these really are put together with a lot of collaboration between the evaluator and the, uh, teacher. To the right, the yellow box really speaks to the observations. We still have to have a minimum number of observations, and that is still going to happen. The difference is they will be informal. Where, uh, there doesn't have to be this designated time where the teachers have to fill out documents. The, the educator and the evaluator can certainly, um, schedule a date for an observation, but it allows a lot of flexibility where administrators can drop in. And frequently drop in is our hope, and that is the encouragement from the state. Although the observations will be considered informal, they still have to include written feedback. The stakeholder feedback is still an aspect of the, um, teacher evaluation, and that usually focuses on family engagement. Should there be a need for individual improvement and remediation plans, that still exists, that um, exists in our own document, and those protocols would be followed. The teachers will still have to do a reflection at the end of the year, and there will be a narrative that the administrator also writes. But the summative rating is waived for this coming school year. Should we go along with the flexibility options? So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer questions, and I, I would like to have the board consider a vote to support and approve the, um, adoption of the flexibility options for this school year only.
Questions? Jim?
Are there any other, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the request of Teresa DeBrito.
Moved and seconded. Uh, further comments?
Yeah, uh, Megan, can you give us your input on this, please?
Happy to. Um, I, I do fully support the, uh, the flexibility that the state has given us. I think we recognize that at this point, uh, holding people accountable as we're still trying to recover our learning would not be appropriate. Um, I think that this will really help teachers to focus on what is the practices from day to day, not just social, emotional learning, but really seeing how are we adjusting and adapting. Um, I think taking away from summative rating and really not doubling down right now on, um, uh, on learning that, that may be disrupted for a lot of different reasons this year, I think is the most appropriate. Last year, they actually removed the end-of-the-year rating, and so I think this is a nice way to jump back in as the state is actually gonna have to retool the entire evaluation system.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay, I see none. Uh, we'll go on to a vote. Um, I think, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, or if you're on the computer, raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstaining? All right, the chairman votes aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda. Is there any way you, yeah, thank you. Um, i- is the, o- on the consent agenda, are the minutes of the, uh, meeting of the Board of Ed on September fourteenth, twenty twenty, if anyone would like to take those off the consent agenda, please let me know. And if you're on video, you may have to shout because, uh, I can't see everybody at once, unfortunately. Okay, believe them on, they will be adopted. Updates on COVID nineteen? Megan?
All right, that is me. Um, so I just want to start by publicly acknowledging the efforts and the communication that has happened within our community. Um, not just our staff and students, but even families, uh, to alert me of potential COVID cases. So I've gotten calls at all hours in the night saying that, that, um, you know, there's suspicion, here's the symptoms, what should I do? And I think it's allowed us to be cautious. It's allowed us to take some of those steps where, you know, even if somebody calls and we've had the call, it's ninety-nine point three. Well, what should I do? And so the more that people have been able to communicate, we've been able to make some really safe decisions. Um, we have severely erred on the side of caution. Um, so to make certain that I, I would rather know that we've cleared the edges versus taking it right to, to the, uh, right to what could potentially be an outbreak. So, um, we have had situations where families have let us know that they were even exposed or potentially exposed, and it's allowed us to take incredibly quick action. Um, at one point, there was a potential exposure in which, um, the children were out of the school within fifteen minutes, and the parents were just, you know, there and, and with us. But um, again, nothing came of it. There wasn't a need to notify anybody because it was a false positive. However, it was the action that was taken. It was the fact that our community let us know, let us react appropriately. And I think that only builds confidence in how we're operating moving forward. Um, we have been able to slowly introduce some new things into the schools. Um, we recognize, we don't want to be, um, ever flippant about the gift of being in schools. So we still very much take the six feet very, you know, that, that is, that's a strict marker for us. Masks are a strict marker for us. But we're just starting to now have sports and sporting competitions. And in those, we're watching if there's whoever they're competing against, we want to know what does their co, what does their COVID spread look like? What's happening with that? Um, we've just introduced, um, music, and it has to be outdoors. And it has to be, you know, we've moved that six feet to twelve feet to make certain that we're able to still have a well-rounded education. However, we also know those are more fragile. Um, you know, i- it, but we do want to open up some of those opportunities. But again, we can only have those opportunities when we know of potential issues that may be out there. So communication has been key, and I really, I have to publicly thank our community, staff, and students in being vigilant, because it really, this is truly one of those moments that it takes a village, and we have an amazing village right now.
Okay. We'll move on to reports and recognition. Um, I really want to thank a lot of people. All right, I really want to thank everyone here that, that works for Region Twelve, our teachers, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, our nurses, our custodians and maintenance staff, our cafeteria workers, our office workers. It takes a lot of people to, um, make Region Twelve happen, and I want to thank our people because they've been on the front line, and they've done an outstanding job. Here we are in our, starting our sixth week of in-person learning. Um, and, uh, I think that that is a testament to their hard work and their putting themselves, uh, here for our kids. Um, I also want to thank our students because your dedication and cooperation, um, has made this doable. Without that, it would, it would have been more difficult. Um, I want to thank our parents without whose support of their students and the school policies designed to keep them safe. Um, a- and allow, say, full in-person learning, um, would not be possible, uh, wi- wi- without that support. And I, I really want to thank that. Our communities have really worked hard to make this happen. But now that we're about to move indoors in a bigger way, as temperatures drop, we cannot let our guard down. We, vigilance is the key. Um, events that might have worked outside on the inside could be concerning, if not potentially dangerous. I think you have to think twice before you have an event. You have to think twice before you have the party, before you have a gathering, before you do something that puts people together, uh, in a room indoors, um, because this is a serious illness. And we need to make sure that we keep our vigilance up, and, and if we do that, then we're gonna stay in school, and that, I think, is critical for our kids and for our communities. So again, think twice, and, um, I'm sorry that we have to be in this position, but here we are, and we're likely to be here for quite a while longer. So, uh, I just want to, I want to thank people, and I want to stress the need for, for vigilance. Um, so, superintendent's report.
Thank you, and, and I think that's very well stated, Greg. I think, um, we, we can't take for granted our, our, um, ability to be open, and that, that happens with partnerships, and so I think that was very well stated. Um, so thus far, our school year has really-
Megan, let me, I forgot to thank the board. Gosh, how, how could I forget to do that? Uh, your dedication and your being here and your coming to in-person meetings and, and doing this is really critical, and I, 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 I can't believe I forgot to thank the board. So in any event, now, go ahead, Megan.
Um, I, I want to, um, just share that this year, we've really been focused on operations and routines to start the school year. Um, and we recognize that the safe habits within our schools need to be routine. Um, they don't happen by accident, and there's been a lot of reinforcement. Um, and this can be exhausting to our staff who's constantly giving, I, I don't know about our teachers on the board, who you're constantly going like this to make certain that when it drops, they're picking it back up. But we are now starting to make certain that we're ramping up the academics. Um, our goal is to establish baselines of understanding, so our students are starting their STAR assessments. Um, and the STAR assessments are tests that really it's math and, um, English language arts-focused. And we did these last year, so the good news is it gives us some baseline. And we're gonna be able to see where our students are now after the return from the spring, and taking a look and seeing what do we really have to do for some of that recovery learning. Um, so we wanted to make certain we didn't have shock for our students coming in. We wanted to- So we wanted to make certain we didn't have shock for our students coming in. We wanted to bring them back into a safe place. But we also have to make certain that academics are now coming out, but do it in a way that it's not punitive, but rather a way that it's guiding us what we have to do to support our students. So that will begin. And then from there, we move to curricular changes, grade level expectations and individualizing student needs. Our distance learners have been helping us improve by fusing our two learning environments. It is a challenge. I don't want to to make it sound like it's so easy as if you just put a webcam in and there's instant learning. It is constantly having your foot in both worlds, both the virtual and the world in front of you. It is trying to make certain that the children who are, you know, who are physically present are having a similar experience to those who are virtually present. And trying to figure out and make certain that they know where to turn in the lessons versus just being able to turn it in in the classroom. So I truly appreciate the work and the extra effort it takes for our distance learners. It is not as good as being in person as far as that experience we can offer. We are doing the best we can, but I truly appreciate the partnerships our distance learning families have given to us. We have, our school counseling department is working on creating some advocacy groups for our distance learners. So that way they know, how do you get the teacher's attention virtually? How do you, how do you make certain that you can say, can you turn the screen a little bit? Can you help me through these things? Because if you expect us to watch for your facial responses, things are going to get missed. So communication is key. And so we're trying to help our distance learners also communicate efficiently with us so we can give a better experience. Our sports teams began their local competitions this week. As a reminder, all of our sports competitions are based on our local geography and not so much on Berkshire League, which is why we're calling them competitions and not games. We don't want to mislead anyone. There is a shortened season that's happening. We are limiting the number of spectators to two parents or guardians that will be able to attend. There are requirements for distance learner, I mean, just try that again, for social distancing to make certain that people are safely enjoying the games or competitions or whatever you want to call them right now. But it's also to say that we are limiting that. I know that students have always loved when their peers have come out to games, but we can't have that right now. So right now, it is a gift to be able to just compete and have a sports season. So I know that there's some letdown in that they don't have as big as crowds. But to us, we're really excited to even just offer this part of the season. So we will be enforcing that. I know that that sometimes can break hearts of people who really want to see and cheer them on. But this is really about our athletes. It's not about us, you know, having the experience with them. It's about their experience. We were planning to have our large animals return this week. We got all the food ready. We got everything set up. And then we had a little snafu in our riding ring in which some of the tongue and groove wall has fallen down. And so we are in the midst of figuring out repairs. That said, while the repairs are happening, we are still looking for how we can get our animals back on campus. But it is one in which just when you think it's ready, 2020 strikes again. So we are truly looking for ways that we can get that animal experience because we're ready for it. Just to follow up, our lunches are going very well. Elementary students are loving having the lunches come to them. I can tell you, it is absolutely being utilized. The free lunches have been welcomed and we've gotten a lot of phone calls from parents, just really happy and actually surprised. One of the complaints is that there's too much food that's been given to the students. But again, just feeling incredibly grateful that right now our students get to take advantage of that free lunch. They do need to order in advance because the lunches are being brought to the elementary campuses every morning. And so again, we want to make certain as many people can participate as they want to, but and to do something the same day, we're not able to always navigate through that request. We have been able to give, you know, two extra lunches just in case somebody doesn't have it. But we just don't have the resources for on-the-spot ordering. So that concludes my updates. Are there any questions about the updates that have been provided? Mary? Sorry, trying to navigate through this so that way I'm not going to echo. Yes, currently, we have three people in the cafeteria that are working. And really, because of the fact that this is cold lunches, it's easier to prepare in advance to work through that. We do have help and some of our business office personnel have been helping to drive the food over to the elementary schools. And then when it's within Chapag, originally, the design, the lunches were trying to go everywhere. And because students were on AB days, they weren't ever in the same place twice. The Chapag administration, as well as working with our cafeteria staff, have thus fixed that moment in which now it goes to a certain location within the zone so it can get picked up rather than to go everywhere. Right now, I think that there is a large demand. They've been able to meet the large demand. So I can tell you that as far as what could potentially be a problem right now has not been a problem. No, I appreciate, always.
All right, any other questions about this? Thank you, Megan. John, treasurer's report.
Yes, Nicole has informed me that the region has received 50% credit from the Connecticut Department of Labor towards unemployment insurance premiums. The total cost was extremely high due to all the COVID-related unemployment claims in general. And this amount of money was credited retroactively back to March. This is very welcome news in that it's not going to cost us what was originally projected. And this month, we're scheduled to receive our second installment from the Connecticut State Department of Education for the Ag Science Grant, the $4,200 per capita per year. Last month, it amounted to $49,000. And it is a year in the rears. So we're collecting this money based on the population, the Ag Science Population 2019, 2020. We're also awaiting more installments from the COVID Relief Fund. Last month, we did receive $18,500, which was originally scheduled to be $17,000, but two of the private schools in the district chose not to participate. And so that increased our portion to, I believe it was $18,500. In addition, we are also projected to receive $231,000 for personal protective equipment. Those monies will probably be dispersed throughout the year. Not certain where that stands at this point, but we haven't received any of that yet. Tonight, during the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting, a few things came up, but one thing that stuck out was when we're preparing the budget, certain scheduled maintenance items accumulate for the facilities to become more than the $15,000 threshold, the bid threshold. So there was some, there's some definitely concern between Don, Nicole and the superintendent as to how to proceed with policy surrounding that. So, I mean, it's definitely something as costs increase, you know, as things inflate every year, we definitely have to start taking a look at how we set policy and adjust policy to reflect costs, especially for things like scheduled maintenance. One thing that I have on my bucket list for this year is to, and I don't know how this school district got one for so many years without doing something about it, but we always end up in July awarding the salary and benefit increases to the non-union employees. And one thing that this board should really take a hard look at is to try to determine those amounts before the budget is presented to the public in May. I don't know why we can't. It would definitely make sense to have a more, a better, you know, reflection as to what these increases are going to be. So definitely know that if we resolve the, again, the raises before July. And that's about it.
Thank you, John. We'll go on to committee reports. Mary, Cabe?
There are, there was a virtual legal issues virtual presentation. It's from 12 noon until 1:15 in the afternoon. And it's taking place, there were different, different things. One is current labor relations and human resource issues. That's on October 26. The 27th is special ed issues. The 28th is board meetings in virtual or hybrid world. And the 29th is extracurricular activities, transportation and liability. So those are, those are meetings that are taking place virtually and that's something you might be interested in. Also, November, there will not be a convention this year, but they are planning to have something in the spring instead. The only other things will be what you can add as a board chair, the meetings that happen with Cabe, if there's anything else that you wanted to add, Greg.
The only thing I was going to say is I did sign up for those, that legal series of seminars. It's free. You can sign up. The board chair thing, I have not been attending as religiously as I did before because I think we've sort of gotten to the point where there are fewer and fewer questions that are coming up as everyone gets into this more. Most people are asking for input that I've given some back and forth where they're looking for input on how people are running fully. No? Well, maybe it doesn't have any volume. I don't know if that makes a difference. But, you know, they're asking questions about how people who are doing full in-person learning are doing it, other things and issues. A lot of the school districts, it's hard for me to comment on most of these because a lot of the school districts have a different, I mean, if you've got, you know, 4,000 or 5,000 or 20,000 students in a school system, the issues of how to run that in person are a lot different than when you have 700 and change kids, which we're going to find out about in a minute. But that, I think, is, we're unique in many different ways. But I've tried to get as much out of those. I've gone to a bunch of them, but I haven't gone to as many lately. So I'm sorry, I have nothing to add on that. It's the short answer. Okay, Mike, Rurikium Education Programming Committee. Okay. Alex is not here for finance and operations, but I think John hit the main, one of the main highlights, a couple of the main highlights of the meeting. So I don't know that we need a report on that. We can wait till our next meeting for that. Labor negotiations, Jim?
There's no negotiations on at this time.
Okay. No negotiations at this time. Julie, strategic long-range planning.
Yeah, we had a meeting on Monday, the 29th. Everyone from the board was there. Everybody on the committee was there. We had a very productive meeting. We are revisiting our strategic goals, which we had sort of put on the back burner for obvious reasons. But we have, we have some goals and we're working on the measures and so forth. And several of the members of the committee are working on each goal. We also discussed our meeting with Sandor Maxx and our brochure, which is really very much close to being done. We're just not convinced that they have a good logo for us as a region. And so we're still working with them on that. Jen Pody had a great idea about sort of an ambassador program reaching out to our new families. And I think Megan sent an email to all of you. So I hope some or all of you will agree to volunteer for that. And it's essentially the idea of us board members sort of having coffee or doing some sort of outreach to our new families so that they will stay connected to the region and hopefully stay in our towns. And it's voluntary on their part, so they can either choose to participate or not. But we thought that would be a nice way to make them feel more connected to our communities. Jen, did you, is Jen there? She's not? Okay, so anyway, it was sort of her idea and I wanted to see if she wanted to weigh in on that.
No, Jen, she's not, she's not with us this evening.
Okay, sorry. It's hard for me to tell from my window here. So anyway, we had a very productive meeting and we hope to be sharing the long-range goals soon with the entire board and also the brochure and the logo.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we're going to move on to new business and updates. Megan, do you have any objection if I ask you that because we have use of facilities issues? Do you have any objection if we move the October enrollment first?
I have no objection to that.
Okay, why don't we look at your October enrollment numbers?
Okay. Question, did you all get that in the board packet, just to make certain that everybody has one?
Did.
Okay, excellent. And I apologize, toggling back and forth may be a little bit challenging tonight. So as you can see, this is the same format that we have evolved to where you can see that we are tracking not only just who are residents, who's within AgriScience within our three towns, who are sending AgriScience students, as well as students from Sherman, our staff, tuition and et cetera. So right now, we have 690 students. As I've mentioned, throughout the summer, we've fluctuated a great deal. We've had a number of our New York families that were originally going to be coming to our schools decide not to come to our schools with the hopes that the city schools would reopen. Now that the city schools are not reopening, we're hearing people who may be coming back. So it feels like this is a moving target. Now, the problem is going to become October 1 is what the state builds everything on. So our numbers may be fluctuating and going higher or lower. But right now, this freezes it in time when we submit all of our reporting. Everything is based off of our October 1 enrollment data. So this number that you see here is also how we calculate what the percentage of each one of our three towns contributes to our board budget. So we recognize that as this school year goes on, we may have actually different fluctuations within our own three towns. However, we capture it based on these numbers that presenting tonight. So there is, there's a lot of weight in these numbers. We don't base it when we're looking at calculations for our three towns. It's not based on the 690. It's actually based on the 566, how many students are from our three towns. So our tuition in and the sending counts do not count against budget allotments. But it's one in which really, everything that you need to know as far as- Um, but it's one in which really, everything that you need to know as far as calculations, what is the percentage, our agri-science numbers, it is all here in the chart. So, at this time, I will open up any questions people may have about the chart. I'm gonna change the view on the screen, so that way I can also see our, uh, board members that are participating virtually. Are there any questions?
Mike?
That is correct. Um, right now, so, uh, what you're not seeing is if you were to say last year, we had approximately six ninety, last year, I believe we had six ninety-five, but that included our reach students that were in that number. We don't have reach students, cause if, if you recall, right now, we decided not to do reach until January. We would revisit whether or not we'd be able to open reach, which means that right now, I am short fifty-two students that would have otherwise been enrolled towards that number. So, if I was to say to you, in looking at that, it's about fifty-two. That said, when you look at what my agri-science from sending towns, it's twenty-four. So, really, if you were to look at the delta between the two, we're probably up about twenty-five. It, it, it's not gonna work for this year, and I think when we look at Prada's reports, and I apologize, I'm repeating it, so in case anybody's not capturing it on the video, um, but I do think that when we're looking at Prada's reports, things that we didn't do, we did not accept as many tuition and, you know, new students. So, there were things that create some of that ebb and flow that we had to, um, to take some, make some calculated decisions, given the space that we have, given potential enrollments. I really think our true test of how we're doing, and, and, you know, Greg, we've talked about this on a number of occasions, is whether or not we can get people to stay in our school districts. Now, they've, they've gotten a chance to see everything that we have. Are they willing to make, you know, what becomes their weekend home, their regular home? Um, you know, the, hopefully, knowing that you don't have to be toggled to an office, and you can, uh, work at any time, any place, that we become a, a much more viable option. Um, so, I think, for Prada's report, I think really, we're going to have to look at not this year's data, cause I think the variables are too unsteady, but I think really next year, and who stays, um, you know, even as things start to stabilize, I think that really does establish the base of our population. So, I, I, I don't know how Prada's report is going to go this year with what can be just a spike and a bump, but our, our goal, and I think Julie, and what you're talking about, and, and the initiatives, um, of asking the board to be ambassadors, is to really also connect our families who are new residents. What I see is a number of our families who are here from New York are, are kind of getting together as New Yorkers, and we wanna really make certain that they know this is what our community is. And part of the problem is, we don't have all of the community events we usually have. Usually, you have the fall harvest festivals, and we have tractor parades, and all of these other things that we're not able to showcase right now. But the thing that we are able to showcase is our small-town connections. And so, that's what we're hoping, and so some of the marketing and some of the things, and I don't wanna make it sound like going out for coffee is a marketing thing, but it is also a way to have somebody ask questions, feel connected, you know? Know where to buy orange juice when you're in our towns. You know, some of those things start to make it a little bit more like home, um, versus feeling like you have to go back to the city for, for the things that are your creature comforts. So, again, we're trying to, to, to utilize and keep the people who, who would not typically be here, and hopefully get them to stay, because they see what our school district can offer their children. This is, we, we, we became his favorite school. He doesn't, not his school in Brooklyn anymore. Um, and, and actually, and he's not alone. We, I've, um, in having conversations, uh, actually, today, I had a conversation with a, a fifth grader at, um, Booth, who, who was struggling a little bit in his transition and just, you know, missing some of his friends. And I asked him, I said, "So, how are we doing?" My, my statement to him was always, you know, "I've gotta be your favorite school. What do I need to do to become your favorite school?" And he said to me, "It's, it's getting closer." So, you know, it's, it's feeling a little bit more comfortable, and, and we really wanna make certain that we, we are, but listening to, to what the needs are and responding to that. And I think that's where our small size allows us to really tailor and pivot to meet the needs of, of people who are coming into our, our district, um, and getting them to assimilate and see how, how wonderful Region Twelve is, so. Yeah. Well, I, if you hear complaints about a dancing traffic guard at, at Booth Frey, it's, it's this call. We're all good.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or anything they wanna add to this discussion? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next thing, which is use of facilities. Um, we have the morning swimmer pool use issue, and we have the, um, karate use of Booth preschool. Um, Megan, how do you wanna kick this off?
Um, well, I gue- I guess it's important that we go back to look at, as a board, a decision that we made, um, during COVID, I believe it was during our May Board of Education meeting, in which we made the decis- decision not to allow outside use, um, outsiders using our facilities, recognizing that, um, the fragility of our, our placement within the schools. And so, that decision that was made, um, part of the things that we need to factor in are the requirements, uh, for our ventilation systems, which is, we have to turn the ventilation system on two hours before occupancy and two hours after, um, occupancy. So, recognizing that there's, there are some of those things that we, we need to factor in ourselves if we, um, do wanna look at others using our facilities. I also think that, um, I do have concerns regarding, um, the ability to disinfect our facilities, um, when people are using it. So, when we look at that and, and evaluate all of the requests that are coming in, right now, I've, I've said no to a lot of requests, and I know Lorraine did a great job presenting today. Um, when I originally spoke to her, I said, "No, we're, we're not able to right now, but welcome to, you know, always talk to the board and, and have those conversations." Um, and of course, the morning swimmers are looking to return. Um, right now, we're not utilizing the pool. Um, if we do indeed allow the morning swimmers to use the facilities, they would not be allowed to use the locker rooms. It would be utilizing the pool and then leaving. Um, because knowing that right now, we can't, um, clean after the group. And, um, talking to Jeff Hayman and scheduling times that people would be in a lane so that nobody is bumping into each other. There's a lot of factors that come in when people want to utilize our facilities. And what happens with us using the facilities too, cause right now, we have no evening events that are happening at the schools. So, um, the, the question really before the board is, how do we want to, at this point, operate? Um, you know, again, I, I shared in the board packet the swimming conditions that need to be, um, met by the state of Connecticut, uh, for the purpose of minimizing the risk of spread of COVID nineteen, um, for indoor swimming. Um, and so, recognizing that we would have very strict guidelines if we wanna open up the pool facilities, because that is not used by our students this fall. Um, we can't have kids walking around, uh, still wet and in bathing suits, and they can't use the locker room. So, we know that that's not utilized by our students. Does that make that area okay for us to open up? Um, knowing what Lorraine has shared about which precaution she was gonna take. Um, typically, we would not allow somebody else to disinfect our facilities. It has to be our custodians, but that would then create additional, um, requests for hours. And so, as we're evaluating all of these things, needing to have, um, board guidance and decisions, because right now, taking the past board guidance, we have said no. And so, recognizing that it's time to have some of these conversations again, given that, um, we know that people do use our facilities, knowing that there's not a lot of other facility options in our three towns. So, i- it's a question of, um, how do we wanna operate, knowing that we do provide a community service? I do have a lot of worries that we introduce public into something that we control. We have very tight controls on with the cleanliness and what that looks like, and how do we wanna move forward? So, bringing that before board.
Well, um, Mary?
Well, the thing is, is at this present time, we don't even have our own volunteers coming in to help to do things. We, as a, I, I can't even walk into the school now and use it. I think we're doing so well, I don't think we should mess with that. I don't think we should let anybody in that isn't staff or a, or a student. I just don't think it's a good idea right now. Maybe later on, but right now, we're doing well, and I don't wanna mess with that.
Uh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Um, we do not charge the park and rec. They do charge the morning swimmers, because they have to have, um, a door monitor and some, some things that happen, um, from the park and rec, but we have not specifically charged them. Um, I don't, it's, it's for the swimmers, um. I, I don't wanna speak for them, but I do know that that's how they paid, um, the door monitor, the person who came in and opened it for the swimmers. The morning swimmers would not be a cost to Region Twelve. Um, it, it, essentially, we would have to adjust the hours, so that way they have to clear our, our facilities far before. But I think the cost that you're looking at is, we would have to turn on our ventilation system two hours earlier than what we're currently. Currently, we turn them on at five o'clock in the morning. We would have to turn it on at three o'clock in the morning. That's, that's not for the pool area. Um, that would be if they were to use our gyms, to use our cafeterias, um. I, I, I don't have the dollar figure on that. Um, I would need to ask Don, but I, I, I don't know. So, the question that Mike had asked was about the ventilation system costs, and I, I don't know that answer to it.
Lisa?
Um, although I understand the desire to come and swim and do karate and continue with activities that we're all accustomed to, I have to agree with Mary. I'm not sure that this is the time to actually start allowing other people in. And, and she's right, I can't even go into the school, and, and my daughter is there. So, I would err on the side of caution, and we've, we've made a policy, and I think at this time, we should just stick with it.
Anyone else, uh, have any comments or want to speak on this issue? I mean, these are obviously, this is very difficult, because these are obviously extraordinarily valuable programs. Um, I, uh, I believe that the, the usage of the pool is, is important to the district, because it builds support for our system. It, uh, offers the community options that they otherwise wouldn't have, and this is not exactly an area with a lot of amenities. Uh, and, so I think that that's an important thing, and to say no really pains me. Uh, I can tell you that the, the karate program is an outstanding program. Both of my daughters participated in it. And, um, I think it was a tremendous, uh, absolutely tremendous program in addition to our, our, our schools. Uh, so this is a really painful decision, because these are clearly important, excellently-run opportunities. And, um, uh, it, it's not gonna make anyone happy here, I think, uh, at the end of the day. But, uh, we do have, uh, w- w- we have a little bit of an unknown. I'd like to get a better idea of what the cost would be for this, uh, to see what of those costs could be passed through in some way, shape, or form, because I think it's, I think the problem we've got is, is we've got our custodians stretched to the breaking point, uh, with just trying to keep this system operating now. And what my fear is, is that we'd end up having to hire, uh, part-time, or, or either that or just give hours, depending on where the cost broke down, where the line went. And I think that's something we, we have to consider in a year in which we're finding there's a two hun- two million-dollar hole in our, in our budget, which hopefully state money is gonna make up some of that difference, uh, and, and savings on other items. But, you know, this is a tricky, a tricky thing to, to deal with. So, that, that's, that's all I wanted to add to it. Uh, John?
Yeah, I agree with you, Greg. Some of these swimmers have been coming up here for decades, every morning religiously. It's very hard to say no, but everyone has to agree on this. It's, it's all or none. I mean, who do we let? You know, you let one, and you say no to the other. It's, it's, uh, yeah, we have to stick with, uh, you know, until things improve. I don't, I just don't see any other way.
I'm sorry, Lisa?
No, I just have two things. One, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a financial issue, although it, it certainly is something we always have to think about. I, I think it's a safety issue, and who we're allowing in the buildings right now. And, and maybe this is something we could, we could address month to month. Um, obviously, if, if things get better, we could reexamine this, but I don't think right now, this is, is the thing to do.
Did everybody hear that on the? So, essentially, Mike was supporting what Lisa was saying, and said that, was talking about the concerns about influenza and what we're about to go into for the, in the cold and flu season. So, trying to make certain that we're taking caution around those things. Mike, did I capture that appropriately? Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Um, it breaks my heart, um, like all of you guys have, have to say no. Um, it does raise another issue, and particularly the karate program. One of the things, I have a child who lives in a thirteen-year-old home, and one of the things that's frustrating with my parents, you know, from March, into the end of last school year, is there was nothing for them to do. I had them home for two weeks, not a script. Um, so, I, I do worry that, you know, as we get into the, the polar weather, opportunities for, for kids to come to this town and be kids. Those opportunities are limited, uh, so. I mean, I don't know, maybe as, if there's a way to sort of, you know, to work in, not as a dance, but, you know, some opportunities for kids to get together in a controlled setting. in a controlled setting outside of school hours.
Could everyone hear that? No. Okay, you you was share, so Justin had shared the concerns regarding students needing activities. And recognizing that it's sometimes we need to let kids be kids. And so saying during the height of COVID, recognizing children not having the opportunity to socialize and looking for some of those opportunities. Did I capture that?
Well, it looks like we're it looks like we've run out of thoughts here.
Greg?
Jim?
Yeah, I asked to put, I asked to put the the karate issue uh on the agenda so that the lady, Ms. Laurenetta, would have an answer, yes or no. So somebody needs to make a motion on these things and let's vote on it. If somebody feels strongly, make a motion. You're muted, Greg.
But this bloody thing decides to mute me and I maybe this, maybe this, it has wisdoms. I- i- if we do nothing, if we take no vote, then our existing policy stands. Our existing policy is no outside groups can use the building. If you want to, you can, you can make a motion to confirm that policy. You can make a motion to amend that policy, or you can make a motion to vitiate that policy. So I'll take any motion that comes, or no motion, either way. But but I think no motion means no one gets to use the building outside of the students. And the Board of Education in the evenings, we're not allowed in the building before the evenings. Am I correct on that, Megan? Is that our current policy?
That is correct, and that's that's why we are here today.
If the rec department in Washington wants to come in and swim, they don't get to do it.
Unless the board makes an exception to do such a thing. And right now, it is our policy not to allow outsiders into our school.
All right, is this a, is is this something that we might be periodically looking at? For example, maybe next semester, we might have a different thought if if this disease magically goes away or otherwise there's a vaccine that's effective and long lasting and situation changes, I suppose we could relook at this. If there's not sentiment to do anything now, maybe not. Maybe that's just a a wish fervent prayer that may not be answered.
Is it something that you would want to then put on each board agenda as to revisit? And each time, are you saying something that's more of a couple months?
I think we're going to have to revisit everything we're doing. Uh you, things could get markedly worse and we may have to really clamp down in a harder way than we are. Things could get better, maybe we can open up. But there's a lot of this situation is fluid. It is changing frequently. Uh and I don't know whether we're going to continue to enjoy the relatively low infection incidence that we've had. Uh if you looked at the charts, you're going to see that in in uh in New London County and in uh Wyndham and Tolland. I suspect Wyndham and Tolland maybe due to Yukon's presence. Um but th- those areas are seeing a sp- uh some, not necessarily a spike in cases, but an increase in cases. And some states are absolutely spiking. Uh maybe we will continue to enjoy. Litchfield County has the lowest incidence in the state right now of of new infections and um and and that kind of thing. But uh that might not continue forever. And so I think we have to always be ready to go with where this goes. For me, I really want to let the outside groups in, but I just don't, I just don't know if I can see clear to that because it's not as simple as just who uses the building. Let's face it, in the instance of the karate, these are basically the same kids, mostly the same kids that are going to school here. Uh then there's some adults involved. So it's it's, but the problem is, we have to make special precautions to clean that space, and that means additional expense for the region in the year when we really don't need any additional expenses. So there's a lot of, a lot of pieces to this. I'm sorry, Lisa's waving.
Uh no, it's okay. I'm sorry. I I I'm sorry to keep weighing in on this, but I I just think our goal right now is to keep the kids in school. And I think the only way we can do this is by controlling who comes in and out and do all of the path that we've been doing it. They've been doing a fantastic job and I don't think this is the time. And my daughter comes home every day so excited that she's at school for one more day, and I think that's what we need to look at. Um I I just, I feel very strongly about this.
Okay, uh Keith?
You can hear me now? Hmm? Okay, well, my my view is that we're not in a position right now where everything has subsided. Things are getting significantly better. There's no cure, that's vaccines. We're still very early in the whole issue of sub- get the, getting the whole epidemic under control. And we seem to have highs and lows and seems to get worse at times. And I I don't think we're in a position at the moment to start opening up too much. I think if something happens, it would be pretty, pretty bad for the the board and the community. And I think we're better off taking our time before we make some substantial changes in what we're doing.
Well, this sounds like a fair consensus that I I don't hear anyone expressing a desire that we should open up and change our policies. So it seems like a consensus to continue with the status quo, which is no outside use of our facilities.
Yeah, I would do that until you really see a change.
Yeah, with great regret.
Substantial change.
Uh we are now open, we're in our sixth week, and I'd like to see this continue. I'd like to see us finish the semester. I'd like to see us do next semester. I'd like to show that it is possible to have in-person learning. And I think whatever we do, I think you're right. What you said, Lisa, really stuck with me is that I think that we've, we've got to make sure we keep our kids in school. I think that's critical. And I don't know, if we can't do it, I don't know who can in this country. So I think we really need to make the effort. So that that sounds like the consensus here. Uh and it hurts, but it's the consensus. Uh is it, any motions? Anyone want to make a motion? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, I'm going to go on to action items. Uh the first one is to consider if appropriate, approve ten additional early dismissal days to the school calendar as presented by the superintendent of schools. Present away.
Okay, um so teachers are are right now, um we we are ducks on water. There's a lot of things that are happening on the surface and we're trying to make it look very calm. Um but we really do, right now, have some struggles with connecting and doing some professional development that we need to get to. Moving to the black schedule that we've done at Chapag, which I still stand by as the smartest, safest option, has also meant that we're not able to collaborate the way that we need to. Special education teachers are not able to meet with regular education teachers. Departments are not meeting together. Uh we don't have time to even evaluate how the students do on the assessments that we're giving out. So really, giving the teachers time to analyze, to look at how our students do, are done. And what we need to do go forward is what I'm asking. Because otherwise, I, we're burning out people. We we really are. And I think to give them time to just plan, to be thoughtful and be mindful in what needs to happen next as they go forward. Um as you can tell in what I propose to the board, this is not a situation to just let teachers go home early. This is not a situation to just, you know, give unstructured time. It's really the time to say, we're going to analyze data. We're not going to look at the curriculum and see what what the, what do we need to do with that? We're going to allow for some collaboration. What does recovery look like? Because I think right now, in absence of doing that, what I see happening in classrooms are, we're still pushing forward with what we've done in the curriculum in the past. But I think that that may be short-sighted on our part because I think we really have to see we know that teaching happened in the spring. I don't know how much of learning happened in the spring. And so to make certain that we're coming up, and I really feel that these half-days will help propel us so much further than would potentially be a loss of learning on those individual days. So I'm asking for the board to consider these additional days. As you can tell um in the calendar that I proposed to you, um we did take into consideration when parent teacher conferences are. We took into consideration um when finals were. We took into consideration um what were just some of those times where we knew we would be assessing. So for example, the end of our STAR window, where we are giving that assessment that I talked about during my update, it closes on October twenty eighth. So it's a perfect time to now really see what do we have to do and uh allowing our teachers to connect and talk about the students and their achievement. So I'm asking the board to consider to amend the calendar to allow these dates for some more professional development during times that we've never seen before in order for us to appropriately educate our students.
Megan, can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
The problem is, I I I think, I'm I'm not sure if I understood you correctly. The 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 problem is really not that you have less time now than you had last year. The problem is you have more demands on that time.
I I think that is absolutely eloquently stated, Greg. I I I think you captured it in a much shorter sentence than I could.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I thank, thank you for endorsing that, that sentiment that this may be helpful to our teachers.
John?
I'm looking at the revised calendar, what's reported to be the revised calendar. I'm not seeing the additional ten days.
It it wasn't on the calendar. There should be a list. Um it's the listing that's on there. I provided the calendar um in the board packet, so that way you'd also see the graduation day. So we did not revise. What you have is the revision that we did from um beginning of the school year where we gave the additional ten days to start the school year, shortened days. Um but it's the um it should look like this, the proposed early dismissal.
Right. When I did the math, it was nineteen scheduled for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year, nineteen half-days. And you add ten additional to that, come out with almost uh a month, which equals fifteen full days. And you add three professional development days to that. I mean, it's like one-sixth of the year. And uh I think that's excessive right off the bat. Maybe we could award some half-days. But to just uh carte blanche add ten days without knowing what what the outcome is, I I wouldn't approve it. It's 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 all about the students losing the instruction. Yeah, it might be great for the teachers to coordinate things. But you know, what are the kids doing at home? I mean, supposedly they can work independently, but I just don't see the instructional advantage of giving, you know, an additional ten days. Or uh it would be the amount of fifteen full school days, a lot of a hundred and eighty day year.
Mike?
Um actually, I think it's uh the superintendent's proposal is pretty modest compared to uh other districts. My district, for example, uh John has two and a half hours built into every Wednesday for teacher planning for, often say, one-on-one with students. In recognition of the fact that this year, unlike any other year in education, when teachers have to do rest and planning, everything has to be their process, the kind of sequence that I'm trying to when I say everything, I mean, everything. Because you cannot disadvantage a student who's at home by having material that is presented in class that they didn't hear or they couldn't see because it was written on the board. So everything has to be so even spirit seekers and it's no easier for us to navigate this existence in reality to them is incredibly complex. A lot of them are still struggling. They're they're a long way into the quarter. They're still struggling with current access information programs because you know, they're very good with certain kinds of technology, John, but they're not you know, we're using sometimes five, six different kinds of applications, computer applications, that some of them have never really used. It means a lot of challenges for both teachers and students.
Let me ask you both this.
I know you're both high school level. You've lost basically, in the last six months, you lost almost three months of education. And that was in the past, but do you see any, any lagging, any opportunity following the high school program to develop these kind of
Just non-attendance. I just to clarify, because you're talking about three months lost. We're we're talking about the synchronous learning that we've had. Okay, okay. So so we did educate, although it was the synchronous and it was distance learning, but there was there was teaching that was happening during that time.
Uh Lisa?
Um I I apologize. I I've missed a lot of the discussion that's gone on. Um however, I do want to just share my support of of this proposal because I think the struggle with the teachers is real. Um and I I think we should support and do everything that we can as a Board of Education to support the teachers um during this difficult time. I mean, this is unprecedented. And I I I don't agree with John. I I think that
She travels up.
It looks like Lisa has frozen. Oh, she's back. Lisa, can you unmute?
Now we can't.
Did you hear any of it?
Oh, we, we did. We, we, we did.
Okay, so you got the gist that I am, I a hundred percent support this. Okay.
All right, Mary, Mary?
Um, I just have to say that, um, I also want the teachers to be able to do whatever they need to support our kids and do the best they can to educate our kids. And if it takes ten more half days, then it takes ten more half days. If, if I support whatever Megan thinks is, is the right thing to do because she knows more about it than I do. So I would support this.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Justin.
Um, another, another thing to add is, um, you know, you mentioned that, you know, we have subjects where, you know, we can't do what's going on underneath. Um, I, I do know that teachers, um, you know, we kind of focus, we're, we're focused on survival day to day. How am I going to get through tomorrow? And you make a great point about looking at what was, where there's where gaps may be. There's no time in the day to do that, um, you know, or look at curriculum and sit down and dedicate.
Two hours, but like we don't have that time to do it for a normal school day. Um, so I'd love to see, you know, that this time where you can't, where the teachers can't sit down and to, or if you did, like, get down, you know, come on, three months of school, or other institutions, I mean, you know, there, there's no time in the day to do that. So this is a great opportunity for the, the gaps that may happen.
Okay.
Greg?
Any other comments?
Greg?
Do we, uh, Jim?
I make a motion to approve the request to the superintendent.
Uh, seconded by Mike. Um, moved and, moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? John?
Other consideration. You get, add ten days, ten half days where you send the students home. What do the parents do with these students who are working and have to arrange childcare and a lot of other things? I mean, and I, again, I don't see the educational advantage. I, I see the advantage for the, for the teachers who can coordinate things. But I can't see sending the student home and expecting them to, um, you know, you can, high school students, I can imagine they can, you can spend them home with work to do. Um, basically homework, but, um, there's a lot of things that need to be considered. I just don't think, most of the students, I mean, and I said on the negotiations committee, oh, uh, almost every teacher gets an hour every day for, um, for taking care of things other than instruction. So I just don't see awarding ten days more in an already abbreviated calendar year.
So, so John, I, I do have to tell you, I did cut back on teacher prep time this year in order to make things work so they're, they're not getting what they would in a traditional school year as we now have. Um, again, to make certain that we've got gym for four weeks, then we get music for four weeks. We have art for four weeks. So we truly have cut back and um, I'd almost say embarrassingly to the detriment of the ability to really plan and navigate our curriculum. So what we have right now, we, is we've created a situation to go through a curriculum. If you go through a curriculum, you've never taught a child. Instead, we really need to reflect on what is happening with that child, with that child, so we can adjust our curriculum. This is truly a year that we can't just do what's always been done. We have to look at it. We have to adjust it and then we have to plan for it. And those things are taking time and those things are, I will tell you of anything this year, this year feels like it's lumbering forward because it takes more effort to do things, things that I, I, it is taking us twice as long to do half as much. And we need to be able to plan for that because the recovery is not just going to be this year. It's for, it's, it's far reaching. And I'm going to say to you, I, more than, I appreciate what our families have done in order to make certain that um, they're supporting the needs of the school and taking the half days. But I'm also going to say we've also not done a hybrid model and, and we've done things within our school to make certain we've got children in front of us. Um, in order to make certain that we're also balancing some of those responsibilities. But I fear that if we continue going the way that we're going, not only my burning out teachers, I'm not giving quality education. I'm just giving them a standardized education that may not be particular to them. And I worry about that.
Right? Anything more? If not, can we proceed to vote on the motion? Um, all those in favor of, uh, the motion, which is to approve ten early, additional early dismissal days, please signify by saying aye. If you're on the screen, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining. All right, chairman votes aye. I think that's a, uh, nine to one to zero. If I'm not mistaken. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider and if appropriate, establish June 12th, twenty twenty-one is the graduation date for the Chippag class of twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Uh, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand if you're on the screen.
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Lisa, are you opposed or in favor?
Oh, no, I, it was aye.
Say that again?
I, I'm not opposing it.
So you're voting thumbs up? Voting aye?
Yes.
Okay, all those opposed? Uh, all those abstaining. All right, it's unanimous. Um, June 12th, twenty twenty-one. Put it on your calendar for, we don't know what. All right.
Fishing conversations.
Number three is to consider if appropriate, approve the removal of the pre-K language in policy eight one hundred. I think you're going to have to give us a little.
I think I'm going to have to share. So we had set forth the policy regarding masks, our eighty-one hundred policy. Um, and this is during the COVID nineteen, recognizing that right now we're requiring masks within schools. When we put forth the policy, the Office of Early Childhood, um, that, that children who were in preschool did not have to be masked while in schools. Um, we had had them through hallways having it on, but we were always going along with the Office of Early Childhood. Um, as, uh, just a week ago, the Office of Early Childhood now said that anybody over the age of two and all of our preschool students need to be masked within the buildings. So what I am recommending for the board is if you look at our policy eighty-one hundred, that we remove the language, um, that is under school buildings and grounds. And the part that says also masks and face covering shall not be required to be worn by pre-K students while in their classrooms. They must, however, wear face covering while on a bus, walking in the school building, when we're traveling in schools. My recommendation is just to remove that entire paragraph so that way there are no exceptions to our mask policy other than metaphor assumptions.
But moved.
Uh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
I said so.
Okay, so yeah, okay, I, I think Jim did. Ah, that is, I don't know why that echo. Um, okay, moved and Mary, you seconded? Moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on this? All is in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand. All those opposed? Please raise your hand or signify by saying nay. All those abstaining? It's unanimous. Number four. Consider and if appropriate, approve the request of the Chippag recreational soccer club to pay half the cost of the field mowing maintenance, not to exceed four thousand dollars as recommended by the facilities committee on September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. We're a little bit tardy on acting on this. Um, but the, the, what, what this is, is there, there's a soccer field on the other side of, of the road here, on the other side of South Street, and it's, it's basically sits atop our septic system. And that soccer field used to be used by our students, middle school students. It's now primarily used by the Chippag Soccer Club. That, two years ago, the facilities committee looked at this because it was costing us money to mow this field. And, you know, if, if we had our brothers for our school use, we would just mow it, you know, every month, once a month, just to keep it from becoming a, a, a field. You know, a, a hayfield. And they wanted this, they wanted to use the field and so they wanted us to mow it. It's got to be mown during the, during the spring, it's got to be mown every four days. And in the fall, it's like every seven to eight days. Uh, but it's, you know, it runs up a bill, so somewhere near eight, nine thousand dollars in the past, but maybe that's come down a little bit. Uh, but the idea is, is that we recommended a couple of years ago that the board pay half the cost. Um, because we have to pay to maintain the field any event to some extent. We felt it was fair and we wanted to encourage this use of the field. And it keeps the field open and available for us. Uh, and so, uh, unfortunately, for some reason, it never made its way to the board. And so now here it is. Uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions or if there's a motion. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Approve this request. Okay, moved by Jim. Is there a second? Okay, I see Justin seconding. Uh, further discussion?
Yes, Greg.
Yeah.
Can we have your opinion on this?
Yeah, my, hold on a second, I had to make sure I'm not muted. My, my opinion is that I think it makes sense for us to do this. I, I, I think it's a good thing to, it's once again, it's one of the few things that we can do that's outside. And, um, I, I think it's something we should probably encourage. Uh, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a good idea. I was in favor of it back then of our sharing the cost of that. And I know they would be thrilled if we shared the cost of it because they'd like to be able to devote more of the limited amount of money they are able to have, uh, to improving the soccer program and to getting more uh, and, and better, you know, opportunities for the kids. So I think that, um, and it is our property and we, there is an advantage to having that field available should we need it, uh, for anything. Um, I, I think it's probably good. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. Four thousand dollars, not a big number.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know, uh, John, you were on the facilities committee. Maybe you have some thoughts.
I also am in favor of this. There's ninety, uh, students or participants from all three towns. The taxpayers are basically, um, it's money well spent. And, uh, it's been a program that's been in, in the district for as far back as I can remember. My, my, my sons participated in, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago. So, uh, yeah.
I think anything you can do to promote kids being active, especially because it's outside. This is a fraught time. This is why I was so unhappy with how we had to go in the direction earlier tonight on the indoor activities. But uh, this is an outdoor activity. I think it's something that can be safely done and I think that we should encourage it. Um, further discussion, further questions? Uh, seeing no hands up and hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand on the screen.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Julie, are you opposed or in favor?
In favor.
Uh, can, I can't hear you. Can you unmute?
I'm, I'm. I'm in favor.
Okay, that's an aye.
Yeah.
Okay, all those opposed? All those abstaining? Oh, yes, Joe, it's probably a good idea because you're involved in that. But yeah. Okay, so we've had one abstaining, uh, nine votes in favor. Uh, nine, zero, one, uh, and that's, that's approved. Okay. Do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue and a legal matter?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, we, we need to, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? It's unanimous. We are going into executive session at eight fifty-three. PM.